This is the one we have to sit down.
I called order to City Council meeting for the city of East Grand Forks for Tuesday, February 6th, 2018 is now five o'clock. Would a city minister, city clerk, please call Rome?
Mayor Steve Gander.
Here.
Council President Mark Holstead.
Here.
Council Vice President Chad Grassel.
Here.
Council members Clarence Vedder.
Here.
Mike Pachowinski.
Here.
Tim Reapell.
Here.
Henry Tweetin.
Here.
Mark Demers.
President.
Assistant Attorney Coram, please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
An open forum and opportunity for members of the public to address the city council on items not on the current agenda. Items requiring council action may be deferred to staff or boards and commissions for research and future council agendas if appropriate. If you'd like to address the city council, please come out to the podium to do so at this time. I see none approval of minutes for January 16th regular meeting and January 23rd work session.
Move.
By Demers.
Second.
Second by Reapell. Any questions or discussion? See none. Roll call, please.
Holstead.
Yes.
Grassel.
Yes.
Demers.
Yes.
Vedder.
Yes.
Pachowinski.
Yes.
Reapell.
Yes.
Tweetin.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Scheduled bid lighting is none. Scheduled public hearing is none. Consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda will be adopted with one motion. However, council members may request individual items to be polled from the consent agenda for discussion and action if they choose. Any members would like three through six polled at all? I see none. Can I take a motion for three through six, please?
Move on three through six.
Move by Grassel, second by Demers. Any questions or discussion? See none. Roll call, please.
Holstead.
Yes.
Grassel.
Yes.
Demers.
Yes.
Vedder.
Yes.
Pachowinski.
Yes.
Reapell.
Yes.
Tweetin.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Knowledge receipts of reports officers, boards and commissions. Regular meeting minutes of Water, Light, Power and Building Commission for January 4th, 2018. Communication is none. Old business, number eight, considered adopted in residence, excuse me, ordinance 23, fourth series, and running the city code chapter 31, adding sections 31.65 through 31.68 entitled Park and Recreation Commission, and by drafting by reference to city code chapter 10, general provisions, and section 10.99, which among other things contain penalty provisions. Second reading.
So move.
By Demers.
Second.
Second by Reapell. Any questions or discussion? None. Roll call, please.
Holstead.
Yes.
Grassel.
Yes.
Demers.
Yes.
Vedder.
Yes.
Pachowinski.
Yes.
Reapell.
Yes.
Tweetin.
Yes.
Motion is carried. New business, number nine, consider approving agreement between the city of East Grand Forks and the Ann Carlson Center, allowing Ann Carlson Center for the use of VFW Arena for the ICANN Bike Camp event that will be taking place from July 16th through the 20th, 2018, with the city waiving the rental fee for this event.
Move.
By Pachowinski, second by Demers. Any discussion or questions? Mr. Reapell.
Yeah, I know, looking at a recommendation, Mr. Hutten is looking for direction on this. Looking at a waiver fee on this fee, the groups you normally rent to, aren't they all 501(c)(3)'s? Majority of them?
Yeah, I would say that they are. You know, the two, the specific one, or the most common ones, the Blue Line Club, the Northern Lights Figure Skating Club, the Arts and Crafts Council, they would all be, I don't know if they're all 501(c)(3)'s, but they'll be nonprofits, for sure.
So what would distinguish this one, that we should waive the fee versus the others?
I guess the thing that I use to reference it is that this is not a revenue generating event for this organization, whereas the other groups typically when rented to them, they're generating a revenue for it, would be the first thing. An example would be the Blue Line Club with their hockey camp in the summer. They're bringing in a lot of revenue in that event, so there'd be more, a little bit more cost to offset, or a little bit more money to offset the cost. The other side of it would be is that there isn't much staff time, or really any differentiation in the use of the building than this use has. For example, again, to use a summer, a month of hockey camps in the summer, there's a significant amount of cost that goes into that for our city, in the utilities to run the building and the manpower, the hours to put the ice in, to take the ice out, all of the work that go into that. That's really, in the end, what the rental revenue covers. It's basically an offset of the cost that it takes for the city to be able to make sure that that camp happens. Whereas, for this event, it's, we already have, the doors open and the lights on every day for walkers, and they wouldn't be using much equipment. It's a couple of tables and a chair, otherwise it's just the space. And our employees are already there to open and close the building anyway, so it really, there isn't a significant impact on cost, that it would cost the city to be able to have them in the building and use it.
Don't you think this could be opening the door for others to come in and ask for a waiver of their fee, too?
I would say that if someone did ask for the same, if there was a case of precedence, the couple of things I just referenced would be the things that I would use to differentiate that. I think really, across the board, the couple of events that we have in the buildings, again, the hockey camps, if it's the figure skaters wanted to rent something, the Arts and Crafts Council, really, in all those cases, our rental cost at this point basically offsets the cost of the city to prepare for, operate and maintain for that event. And really, I think that, in this case, there just isn't much there. It's, we're kind of already, we're already doing all the work that they need.
So this would kind of be a policy setting decision for you. If we vote yes, it'll open the door for this to happen, if you think it's necessary?
I think that it opens the door for the conversation to put something more firm in place. I would like there to be a more solid rental policy, and even looking at the fees that we charge. I think, you know, when I went to the work session, I talked about $200 a day has kind of been our typical rate. I'm not sure that that's high enough to cover the cost, when we do have to have a staff person in the building and helping run that event. So I think if this lends to further conversation, to have us reevaluate the whole rental scheme and what it costs for different events, that's.
I know that the surrounding is usually 300, so we're low.
Yeah, right. I would agree.
So, that's all I had?
Anybody else have any questions? Mr. Demers.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I would just say that the folks, the families, that are going to be served by this event currently have little to no subsidized recreation from the city of East Grand Forks right now. So if we can do anything to kind of boost that participation, I think we should. So we do a lot to subsidize a lot of the other groups, so I think this is more than fair. And if anybody wants to come and challenge, I think they have all rights to challenge future fees or rates, but I would, I think you've made a more than adequate case for this, and I think we're on good footing for going forward with how we have been doing it. Thank you.
Eric Gander.
We did talk about this in some detail at our work session. Would you take a moment and describe the population, the group of people that are served by this event, just so everybody knows it? It's a pretty neat thing.
Yeah, absolutely. So the ICANN Bike Camp, it's a national organization that will come in and teach the camp. It'll teach individuals with disabilities how to ride a bicycle. So it's hosted, it'll be hosted by the Ann Carlson Center. They're the ones that would have the use agreement with the building. They're located all over North Dakota and serve individuals with disabilities. And this camp will have up to 40 participants, again, that will be taught how to ride a bicycle over the course of a week. Everything from first learning how, just almost like on training wheels, with a volunteer by their side, holding the bike, making sure they can stay upright. And once they learn those skills, then they'll be, graduate up to going outside and being out onto the trail and in our parking lots, riding a bike on their own. So it really is, it will be a, it's a camp that's been held in other communities, Minot and Fargo-Moorhead specifically in North Dakota. And I think that we're lucky that they've looked at our facility and asked us to be a site in greater Grand Forks that can be a good host for it.
Thank you.
Any other things?
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Holstead.
Yes.
Grassel.
Yes.
Demers.
Yes.
Vedder.
Yes.
Pachowinski.
Yes.
Reapell.
Yes.
Tweetin.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number 10, consider approving the purchase of stamina black sports flooring from Beckerina Products for total amount of $22,519.9, which covers both the material and installation.
Move.
Second by Grassel, second by Demers. Any questions or discussion? Mr. Vedder.
If I remember right, the bid talked about delivering you the first floor. Is there going to be an upcharge when they figure they got to haul it upstairs?
Yeah, there is. We discussed that. They didn't change the terminology in their bid, but they know it's on the second floor. Beckerina Products does know that. And they said that they would supply the lift to be able to do it. There's no change to the cost of that. It's just they didn't get up, the terminology there, it didn't get updated.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Any questions? See none. Roll call, please.
Holstead.
Yes.
Grassel.
Yes.
Demers.
Yes.
Vedder.
Yes.
Pachowinski.
Yes.
Reapell.
Yes.
Tweetin.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number 11, consider approving the purchase of five in-car video and eight body cam systems, along with redactive software and required hardware from WatchGuard for a total amount of $48,828.73.
Move.
Second by, Mr. Tweetin. Any discussion or questions?
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief, could you remind me how many vehicles and their types that we have in your fleet?
We currently have five squad cars. We have 2013, or 14, 2013 and 2014 Ford SUVs.
How many of those are you?
We have four SUVs, excuse me, yeah. 2014, trying to think, because we're trading in two for two 2018s. So those will be replaced in about two months. So we'll look at, what we'll have when this.
So basically, five squads.
Five squads, yes. Four SUVs and one sedan.
And then, unmarked?
Unmarked, we have a total of four.
Four unmarked?
I tell you, take that back, five. One for each of the investigators, one for myself, and then one training car.
And then, is that include the potential additional vehicle in the next?
K-9 program? No, it does not. That would be an additional.
So that would be six squads?
Yes, it would.
Is that considered a squad?
Yes, it would be.
Okay, so six squads, four unmarked.
Five unmarked.
Well, one that's training only, and then?
Yeah, it's used for transport officers to train.
Okay. So I guess my, the reason I'm asking is, I'm trying to, you know, get my head around what we're trying to do, and then obviously, there's a cost issue to it. I would think, and we can discuss in further, I would think that there would be a value, at least in putting one in the potential new vehicle that we're getting in item 12, potentially, if that passes.
We do plan to have one, assuming council does approve the K-9 program. We do plan to purchase a car, in-car video system for that as well. We'll get a separate bid for that, once we receive approval from council, if that does happen, which should be somewhere in the neighborhood of $7,000, which we do have figured into our projected startup costs of approximately $34,000. That's included in that amount. I don't get in ahead of myself, but at the present time, and I'm assuming this question's going to come up shortly, anyway, at the present time, we have between $15,000 and $16,000 in the police association account, with additional promised donations of $17,500, as well as some smaller ones that, we don't know the amounts, that have also been promised. So that gets us already up to about, right around $33,000. So we're very close to what we need for that startup cost. We're still obviously hoping to raise additional funds that will help us with the ongoing expenses, but we nearly have our, we're counting the commitments, donation commitments, we nearly have our startup cost covered.
Okay. And then, of the five less one, four unmarked cars, I guess I could see some value in having cameras in those as well, or maybe not, I don't know what the usage of all those are, but I know in the past, unmarked cars have been used to pull over car, I mean, you can use them in traffic, or whatever type of things. And I just wonder, is there a plan going forward that you would implement the vehicle cameras in those cars as well?
We've never considered that, primarily just because of the expense. It is fairly significant expense. My vehicle gets relatively little traffic. I do, all of our, with the exception of the training car, the investigator's vehicles and my vehicle, all have lights and sirens, so they are occasionally used to make stops, but quite rarely. Whether it be worth the cost, it's certainly worth a debate or a discussion, but at this point in time, we've never brought it up, simply because of the cost.
I just, I can see the potential for there to be, just in the nature of being unmarked and all those other things, that there's, you know, there's some potential for gray areas to occur and stuff, so, not, I mean, those are usually, you know.
And usually, those officers are in plain clothes. Myself, for example, while I wear uniform at times, the majority of the time, I'm in plain clothes. And if I do make a stop, I'm walking out to a person with, you know, an unmarked vehicle, having stopped them, and I'm in plain clothes. So it's not often, it's not always readily apparent that, obviously, we identify ourselves as police officers right away, but it's not necessarily apparent.
Right. But like I said, that, I would, I agree with the way that it's progressing. I like the first step. I would just like to, obviously, as funds become more available, as we budget in the future, I'd like to see some attempt to try to bring those other vehicles online, so.
It's something to consider, but it would be an additional, you know, probably $30,000 to $35,000 to give them all covered.
Anything else, sir?
That's it.
Anybody else have any questions on that? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Reference the comments that were made at the last work session for both this program and the K-9 program. We did have a supervisors' meeting the last Monday, where myself and our command staff, sergeants and lieutenant, I checked, discussed various methods of tracking. We have not completed that or finalized what we would track, or how we would go about doing that, but we have initiated those discussions, and we will implement some plans before anything is put into place.
Thank you, sir. No other questions? Roll call, please.
Holstead.
Yes.
Grassel.
Yes.
Demers.
Yes.
Vedder.
Yes.
Pachowinski.
Yes.
Reapell.
Yes.
Tweetin.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number 12, consider authorizing the police department to begin a new dual-purpose K-9 program in the city of East Grand Forks, utilizing donated and grant dollars to start this program.
Move.
Goodbye, Grassel.
Second.
Second by Reapell. Mr. Tweetin.
May I make a few comments? I have put out three printouts. There's a very recent one, that was printed by the 13-Towns newspaper. Warren Strandell kind of explains what's going on in regard to our drug efforts. Our city president, or our council president, is a member of that committee. Our chief of police, Mike Hedlund, is a member of the advisory committee, and Warren Strandell. One of the things that we've got to remember on not only the K-9 12, K-9 program, the K-9 dog is used for multi-purposes. It's used in rapes, assaults, murders, people lost in the woods, and many other things. But there's one thing that I think is very, very important. The drug thing is like the bubonic plague years ago in Europe. It spread very, very hurriedly. And in March, my members of the city council are going to go down and meet with the state representatives and senators, and President Mark Dayton, or Governor Mark Dayton. I'm going to ask for a personal meeting with him. I know him very well. I've known him for years and years. I'm going to suggest to him that this whole matter be considered on a statewide basis. This drug thing is ruining a lot of lives, destroying people, people dying, and somebody, somewhere, is going to have to take a concerted effort to stamp it out. And the one thing, if you've ever worked in trying to stop drugs, you find out there are people who have clean records that sell it because they don't think they can get caught. We've had them in Polk County, and I know who they were. But I think that we all have some responsibilities. We're aware of it. The council, by their action, and the mayor have indicated that they're going to assume the responsibility. We've got an excellent opportunity to get rid of one of the worst tragedies that have ever hit the United States. And the big problem is that a lot of people don't know how easy it starts. When you look at some of these papers, the people are hitting main highways with literally truckloads of marijuana. And they're very, very confident. And these drugs are coming from all over the world. It isn't just the United States. But one thing you have to remember, in East Grand Forks, we have major highways, either right here, or right across a river. And everybody, citizen of this country, should take and back this thing up. It should be going nationwide. We can start with the state. Have you got no further comments? Maybe some of the council members, or the mayor, would like to make comments?
Mr. Vedder.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief, Hedlund, questions on the budget, because every year we work on the budget, and you submit a budget, and we're always going back and cutting things out of the budget to get things to balance. So how are you going to get your budget to balance in the future years, if this program's approved?
That's where the biggest problem comes. And to be honest with you, that's why I have not brought this forward to council before. This go-around, we had officers that were willing to really put in a strong effort, at a minimum, cover up the startup costs. Hopefully, we'll be able to fundraise enough to have some ongoing expenses done as well. I know there's been discussions about ongoing efforts for the future, to try to offset at least some of those costs. I would be perfectly honest with you, that's the biggest issue. We do the best we can to try to bring in reasonable budget requests. Every year, there's items that we would like to have, that we're not able to get. And that's just the reality of police work, and reality of city budgeting. It's sort of like an ATV. We would like a radar sign. Those are things we would like, and it would be useful to the community. You've got to cut corners somewhere. And this would be just one more area that I guess we will do the best we can with the fundraising, and we'll do the best we can with budgeting the balance. And hopefully, we show over the course of time that this program would be worth the city's investment as well, because obviously, we're not going to be able to fund it through fundraising forever. I would assume that we'll either show it's worth, or we'll show that it's not worth it. And that would be, you know, if we can't fundraise enough to cover ongoing costs in the future, I'll be coming to you folks and requesting additional funding in our budget to help offset those costs. If you don't feel it's worth it, then at that point in time, we'd be cutting the program.
If this passes, and I don't know if you've checked into it or not, but I think we should, if it does pass, we should look into insuring the K-9 unit. And I don't know if you've looked into those costs at all, or anything, but that would be my.
Are you talking the vehicle, or the dog?
The dog.
Dog.
Yeah, I'm not sure, to be honest with you. I have not looked into that, and that's absolutely a very good point, something to look at.
Okay.
I guess that is one thing that did come up, as far as when I put it out on the listserv, as far as what any other unanticipated cost would be for having a K-9 unit. What I learned from the League of Minnesota Cities is that they have a set coverage for the police department's size of the department, those type of things. What they indicated to me is there would be no additional cost for a police dog. It doesn't increase the risk amount, as far as what they've seen. So this would be the additional vehicle and things like that, but it wouldn't, as far as what they indicated to me, there would not be additional coverage in future years for the dog itself.
So if we lost the dog while it was on duty, or for whatever reason, there is an insurance then to replace that dog, and train a new one?
That's a good, I guess I didn't ask, I was thinking more as like the liability, if it bit somebody, you know, the exposure for interacting with the public. I will ask that, I guess I can ask that, but I didn't ask about as far as replacing the dog. I was looking more as far as our liability for contact with citizens.
I'd only consider it from liability as well, but you're correct. The dog becomes a very valuable piece of property for the city.
Yeah.
Eric Gander.
I am very comfortable going forward with this program. Our chief has made the request in against the totality of all the police work that happens, and has indicated that this is, again, with all the other priorities and all the other things that we're doing, this is going to help do the job of policing. Also got a strong request from a representative of our Pine Prairie Drug Task Force, had kind of the same thing, to the help that a dog brings, and it does add a measure of safety to the police officers, and it does add effectiveness to the work that they do. And I can sure speak in favor of it, and we'll find a way to make it fit in budgetarily going forward.
Thank you, Mr. President. Is the, the dog will be the property of the East Grand Forks city?
Yes, it would be.
Is that, so if the handler is terminated, or retires, or whatever, what happens, before the dog is through its service?
Typically, we would, under those circumstances, we would have another handler come on board. You would have to have the handler and the K-9 go through some training again, so there would be a transition period. The University of North Dakota Police Department is going through that right now.
But what would happen in the meantime, does?
You would, basically, the dog wouldn't be able to work without a handler. So while you selected a new handler and got them trained up to speed with each other, there's a certain, you know, there's a high level of trust that has to be ingrained between that K-9 and the handler, that certainly can go from one handler to a new one. But there is a time period in there. As I mentioned, the UND PD is going through that right now, where they have switched from their former handler to a new handler. But everything I've heard, that's going well. I'm not sure if they're active and actually working yet, but I know they're in that process, so it certainly can be done.
Oh, because there'd be, so you're saying there would be a certain amount of downtime, then?
There'd be some downtime, yes.
And probably some boarding, or, I mean, you wouldn't hire, you just don't, you've seen our hiring process doesn't happen overnight. I mean.
Well, we would, I would assume we would use, again, of course, it depends if we have a, someone that is interested and qualified to be a handler in the department. You can't just grab anybody. Myself, for example, I don't have the time in my personal life to be a K-9 handler. It just takes too much time away from the job. But I'm sure we have other young officers that would be very interested in doing it, if that were to come about. But hopefully, that's not the case. But yeah, it's certainly something to keep in the back of our minds.
And I guess, to the city administrator, in the work session, I mentioned that we need to draft or come up with some sort of language, or, in my opinion, we need to draft or come up with some language in a memorandum of understanding with LELS regarding how it all plays out, making sure that pointing is consistent with other patrol, that it's, that we don't get told that, while this person is doing this off-duty, needs to get paid this, all these other things. I think it, having been in different negotiations, it, these things tend to creep, and if, before we get going on this, it should be outlined in big, bold letters what this is going to consist of.
Well, I guess what I can say about that is, I did send that out on the listserv to a number of communities that already have K-9 units. What I have found is that there's a certain amount of cost that goes with it, the built-in overtime. There's a certain time each day that the K-9 officer has to work with the dog. And outside of that, I did not get any indication that that has played into anything with their union negotiations. The K-9 officer, it's, what is indicated to me is that they had that additional overtime, but as far as, it did not change the point system of what a police officer, it doesn't change the danger level, it doesn't change the weight, you know, what they have to do an agreement with the union, or the group, that this is how it's going to go. I don't see any problem with actually outlining what our assumptions are going forward, and that way, we aren't basing it on, if some issue does come up, then we aren't basing it on, well, other groups aren't doing this, I guess, if we have it defined clearly. But going forward.
I guess, yeah, we could certainly look at putting something in for the current contract, but it'd be like anything else, that it would end, it would expire at the end of the next contract, and they could negotiate it. But the indication I got, I didn't see there would be an issue with that, we could certainly work with that.
And then, I guess, so you mentioned that the additional overtime would be considered the balance of that compensation, then? So do we anticipate additional overtime to be budgeted, then? Or needing to be budgeted? Or what's the anticipation for additional overtime?
Do you have the answer to that? Are there's...
I don't, to be honest with you. That's going to be purely based on the number of call-outs when the officer is off-duty, and whether they choose to take comp time or overtime. It certainly would be an increase in that area. But on the other hand, we're, as of next week, we're fully staffed and fully trained. No guarantees how long that will last, obviously, but because of that, as many of you that have been into the police department know, in our dispatch center, there's a main calendar for the month that shows the shifts, and there's sticky notes on there for the days that we have to have overtime shifts filled. For the month of February, there's two. Last six months of 2017, there was barely a day that there wasn't at least one. There were literally two for the month of February. So our overtime costs, at least in the short term, are going to go down significantly. Programs like this, I honestly think, will help with retention, because it's just one more avenue to give an officer a different career path, a different slash related career path, just like I believe that us joining with Grand Forks and having officers have the ability to be on the SWAT team, negotiations team, and bond team, also are attractive for both recruiting and retention.
Do you anticipate any internal issues with allocation of overtime, then? Because if we have one person that's designated that's going to get overtime, is there a potential for a perceived inequity?
Suppose you could always have that possibility, but our callback is done through a tried-and-true practice, they have call-out lists that the officers rotate through, that's done as fairly as possible. Every officer had the ability to put in for this position, so, you know, if they didn't put in for it, I really don't think they have grounds to complain that that particular officer is going to be getting overtime that they then didn't get. Just the same token, every officer had the ability to put in for a SWAT team position.
But only one person is available to get it. Not everybody could get it, right?
That's correct, but the same thing goes with the special operations teams. There are limited openings on those positions, on those teams, so everybody isn't going to get it, even though those do, if there's a SWAT team call-out or negotiations call-out, those officers, when they get called out, they do get paid overtime for that if it's on their off-duty time. So it's, everybody isn't, while everybody can put in for those, everybody isn't going to be selected.
And I just, I want to let you know, I mean, part of this is because we've done the negotiations, we see what happens when these issues come before us, and I want everybody to be aware of some of the potential hurdles.
Yeah, I see no issue with having something, an MOU drawn up, I don't have any problem with that.
Mr. President, may I make a comment?
Henry, hang on a second, Tim's going before you.
Ironically, you talked about, Mr. Vedder talked about health insurance, accident insurance, and life insurance for a dog. I just checked on my, for that for my dog today, and you can get it through the local vets, and several different insurance companies, they all carry it. So I did check, so it is available.
I checked, too, last week, mine's pre-existing, so I can't get covered.
I'd just like to make a comment, gentlemen. One of the things that, we've got a $200,000 budget for this task force, it'll undoubtedly have to be increased. But it isn't just East Grand Forks that has a drug problem, it's the whole state. And we are planting seed here, beginning, because we're trying to do something about it. We will expect the state to reimburse our costs of the dog, so that's what we should be trying, at least buying it.
Good luck with that.
We're not going to expect to be reimbursed for feeding it, or petting it.
Petting is a good word.
That is not recommended.
I've no further comments.
I just wanted to let chief know, and the staff, and whoever's been involved in this, I commend them for the efforts that have been put forward for the fundraising, and I do hope that, moving forward, that this is a great asset that we have for the community, and it does help in every aspect of it, from finding someone to drugs, or whatever it may be. And I appreciate the efforts.
Thank you.
They also have anything? Roll call, please.
Holstead?
Yes.
Grassel?
Yes.
Demers?
No.
Vedder?
No.
Park Chavinsky?
Yes.
Reapell?
Yes.
Tweetin?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number 13 claims, consider authorizing a city administrative clerk treasure to issue payment of recalcitrant bills and payroll.
Motion second.
By Grassel, second by Reapell, any discussions or questions? See none, roll call, please.
Holstead?
Yes.
Grassel?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Vedder?
Yes.
Park Chavinsky?
Yes.
Reapell?
Yes.
Tweetin?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Mayor Gander.
All right. One item, Nancy, for next Tuesday, would you be willing to bring a little update for us on, I remember, on the cell tower study, maybe nothing has happened, but we're going to commission a study of cell tower utilization or need. Are we getting an update on that anytime soon? Next week would be great, you don't have to do it now. Independent contractors working on that, it sounds like, or going to?
We have received a report, the draft report. Ron and David and I are meeting Thursday morning to go through it. We've already got some questions that we want further input on, and possible answers from the consultant, so we're going to ask those in advance, see if we can get those answers, if not, go through a conference call, so we can get maybe a cleaner version of that report. And then, once we receive that, then we'll, we'll have the consultant present the report, so that you can ask very specific questions of him, and how he came to his conclusions. And then, we'll also have our input on what we've discussed, and kind of where we're at, at that point, then, moving forward with any sort of cell tower. So if it's not next Tuesday, if we don't get to the point where I think I'm comfortable with his answers, or we need further input, it will be by the end of the month.
Perfect.
So...
I just want to say, that did come in today, ironically, it just came in today, and we did go through it, and when she talked about to get a cleaner version of it, I think what she means by that is a more user-friendly, or more layman's-term report, it's more written like a consultant to a...
Well, I'm thankful that it moved. I'm thankful that it moved, you know, coming out of that last go-around, that you've brought it to this point, I appreciate that update, and I sure like the idea of, when it does come before us, that we have the representative there to bounce questions off. That's great.
Yes, yeah, that was kind of what I had requested when I sought the consultants, was that it doesn't do them any good to give us a report and have you ask us questions, because we're not cell tower experts, so...
I know. Thanks, Nancy, appreciate it.
Mayor, if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Demers?
Can I just...
Absolutely, sorry.
I know, Mr. Mickelson, you, did you just attend a meeting or a conference regarding, like, 5G cellular? I thought I saw in your itinerary or something.
Well, we, Mr. Goff, that's...
Okay.
Completing the small cell review, the document received from Verizon, that's what we...
I just didn't know if there was any overlap that could be shared with the consultant about what we're doing.
That's separate from this, because small cell tower is more of an antenna that sits on top of a light pole, it's maybe two feet in height. Those are, Grand Forks has adopted an ordinance for those in their downtown areas, where they have high-density, like, service establishments, bars, restaurants, gyms, places where people tend to use data on their phone more often, and so they're starting to add, they look like a small black cylinder that sits on top of a light pole in the right-of-way.
And I guess my point...
And that's very different than this cell tower. We are addressing it concurrently, but separately, and that will involve a little bit more zoning, because I do not have any sort of control over anything within the right-of-way, so we're not sure how we're going to address that, because it's not a cell tower or a monopole tower, but it is acting similarly. But again, not in a zoning district, not on, you know, on land, it's more in the right-of-way, so...
I guess my point is, is if the consultant is supposed to be addressing feasibility of putting more poles up, or additional poles up, I would imagine that some of that feasibility needs to address what is going to be in place in two years, and what the city is going to be doing to address data, 5G data.
We can ask the consultant to look at an overview of how much cell capacity we need in the city, and different areas of where. So both, well, I contacted three consultants, and they were very specific to say that when you're hired to do this study, you are looking at the area that that specific company wants to put up a tower, that particular tower, and if, in fact, is it necessary in that area, are there areas in that general, you know, are there other locations within that general area? None of them were willing to do a comprehensive overview of the city, and does AT&amp;T and Sprint or Verizon, are they going to be looking at other towers, and where are we going to have those uses? None of them would be willing to do that at the cost of Verizon. So while it was a great idea, and I did present that, they were not willing to do that. They would do that for the city, if the city wanted to hire and do an overall citywide comprehensive, different types of towers, different types of antennas, different types of uses, but that would be at our cost and not at Verizon's cost. So that's why we're kind of trying to address them separately, so...
Sorry to bring you up, Nancy, without any...
No, that's okay.
Appreciate it.
But it's good information, so, and at least, you know, we're kind of following through on this, so...
Good, thank you.
Yep.
I have just a couple other things. On April 25th will be our State of the City address, and we're still working out the details of that. And I do want to thank Keith Mickelson, because he prepared all the videos for us last year, he and colleagues of his, and they worked through that. I can tell you this, that our feature this year will heavily stress water and light and public works, because by some technical malfunction, those two videos did not get shown last year. And I really, I guess I do know where the malfunction was. It was right here, we sort of just skipped over those two, but they will be focused in on pretty heavily this year, not to embarrass them or anything. And I, Mayor Brown is having his State of the City address coming up in about a week, had a really nice visit with Pete, who is preparing the comments, or working to help the mayor prepare his comments, on areas where we cooperate well with Grand Forks. And I was pleased, as we visited, we went too long, Megan had to come and break us up, after about an hour and a half of just working through ways that Grand Forks and East Grand Forks cooperate really well. And so those will be included in Mayor Mike's comments, and for sure, we'll include those in ours also. Finally, you know, it's kind of easy to rip on kids. We rip on kids, and it just seems to come so naturally for that young generation. I think my parents probably thought our generation was lazy and unfocused and unmotivated. In fact, they made a point of telling that to us, and I think sometimes, we look at the younger generation today, and we see a lot of that same sort of thing. But what we forget is, even ourselves, the development that took place from when we were 20 years old to when we were 56, I hope we learned a few things about how to focus, how to work, and so on. But once in a while, we hear of people in that younger generation who seem to get it probably quicker than I did. And so I have two nominations for Grinder Awards right here, and I'd just like to read a note that I got from Mark Dragich, Recreation Supervisor from Parks and Rec. "Hi, Mayor, I'd like to nominate Cole Weber and Jared Reek for this prestigious award. The two recent senior high grads, 2016, are coaching our PUEB red team. It is their second-year coaching, and they have done an outstanding job. I recently received the following message from a team parent. Hi, Mark, I just want to say what a great job Cole Weber and Jared Reek are doing, and what an impact they're having on these young boys of ours. My son and along with the team love going to practices because they are so well-organized, and are so good about discipline when they need to be, and also having fun, and I believe that's what it's all about. Just thought I would share that and let you know we really have enjoyed them." And now, we're back to Mark. "As you're aware, the important role not only hockey, but all youth activities play in the lives of our youth. Cole and Jared, having just completed their days in youth activities, are giving back in such a positive way, they truly understand and teach the importance of teamwork, development, passion, and enjoyment of the game. Great life lessons for us all. They bring great ability and provide to our program and to our community. Thank you, Mark." So Cole and Jared will be getting Grinder Awards. That's all I got.
Vedder.
I don't have anything, thank you.
Mr. Chavinsky.
Nothing tonight.
Mr. Reapell.
I would just like to thank Nancy, I called her the other day and asked a little question of her, and half hour later, I ran into the individual and had the answer for him, so thank you.
Free.
I would just like to make two comments. Number one is, we have extra copies of what I gave the mayor and the city council, so you come up here and take one of each. I also have, I'd like to give you a little history of East Grand Forks. Al Ran was city clerk for many years during the '30s, '40s, '50s, and '60s, and what he did, he wrote down the average date of when water would run down Demers Avenue. And when I got on the council the first time, he told me that. And the average date for water to run down the street is March 6. Write that down and see what happens, how close we are to that now. Outside of that, I talk too much.
Mr. Murphy.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Grass.
Just wanted to congratulate Officer Highcheck on his efforts in getting that K-9 program. It's good to see an Eastside kid want to do a nice job for our community, and we appreciate that effort.
Yep. I have nothing tonight. Mr. Murphy.
I just have two things, real quick. The first item is that on February 15th, we will be having the tri-city meeting here at the Fairfield Marriott. Looks like that is scheduled to go, looks like we will have two of the three representatives, state representatives in attendance. The third one will be calling in as a conference call, she will not be in the area, so look forward to that. And it looks like we're going to get a good turnout from the other two cities here as well. The third item, or, second item, is the tour of the Air Force Base. So any council members that would like to go on that tour for March, excuse me, February 22nd, please, and has not got, gotten me their information as far as their driver's license number, full name, date of birth, and address, please get that to me here tonight before we leave, because I do have to have that turned in tomorrow for them to have enough time to do all their face screening.
Like I said, they already know. Why are you asking?
So that's all I have.
Mr. Murphy, you got mine?
I did.
We're good?
Yep.
Nothing, unless there's any questions for me. Henry.
I have nothing.
Anything from the department heads? See none, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
By Reapell. Second by Demers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, same side. Motion's carried, meeting is adjourned.